Good evening, everyone, and good evening, everyone in our viewing audience this evening. I understand that Councillor Galloway-Seelock has already informed you we were running a few minutes late because of the vigil outside, so thank you for your patience. And thank you to all of our young Oh Canada singers who are here today. And I understand we have Sparks, Brownies, Guides, Pathfinders, and Rangers here. So a wide range of age groups from five to seventeen, along with some very dedicated leaders and supportive parents, drivers, and other accompanying people. So I do want to welcome you to City Hall and thank you for coming to Singer National Anthem this evening. And so I will invite everyone in the audience, as they are able, to stand and join our young choir in the singing of Oh Canada.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love, in all our sons commend. With loving hearts we seedly rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Very good. And if I can ask everyone, just before we start moving out, if I can ask everyone to just stand for a moment of silence in memory of those who were killed in Quebec City last night at the mosque. May they rest in peace. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening and for your awesome voices. Hopefully, we'll have you come back again. And we have City of Kitchener pins for all of you that you can hopefully, I don't know what the rules are, but hopefully you can put them on your uniforms and if not, on something else. Absolutely. Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. By the way, if any of you are so inclined, you're free to sit here and enjoy the rest of the council meeting as well.
We have some skating to do.
Okay.
Part of our daily physical fitness.
Excellent.
It did help.
We like to hear that. We have a great rink just outside.
You can join us after the meetings.
Perfect. Pass our bedtime. Okay, it's been moved by Councillor Davie that the minutes of the regular meeting held December 12th, and the special meetings held December 12th and January 9th is mailed to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Any disclosures of pecuniary... Oh, sorry, one change. Actually, we haven't taken that vote yet. Councillor Davie, if you can click in, please?
Yeah, apologies, sorry. Just the minutes have to reflect the changes as per the discussion regarding what we spoke about on December 12th for the Festival of Neighborhoods grant.
Okay. So with that change, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest? There being none, and there are no communications referred to file. We'll now move on to presentations. And we have Kerry Howard here, project manager with the Waste Management Program at the Region of Waterloo, to highlight upcoming changes to the Waste Management Program. Welcome, Kerry.
Hi, I'm Kim, Kim Kirigawa. And I'm a Waste Management Coordinator with the region, and this is Kerry Mastis-Howard, and she's a project manager. And we're here from the Region Waterloo's Waste Management Office to tell you about the residential curbside waste collection changes that are happening. These changes will begin on March 6th, and will ensure a standard level of service throughout all seven area municipalities. Tonight, I'm going to provide some general information about the new collection rules and limits, the collection schedule, and some resources available to residents, the new programs we're offering, and some Kitchener-specific information. Beginning on March 6th, there will be changes to several programs, but some things will stay the same. Green bins and blue boxes will continue to be collected every week, and seasonal yard waste collection will be collected every two weeks. As usual, there are no limits to the number of green bins, blue boxes, or yard waste items that can be set out, and they must all be no heavier than 23 kilograms each. There will be changes to garbage. Instead of weekly collection, they'll be collected every second week, and there'll be new lower limits. So for single-family homes in each duplex, garbage will be limited to four bags or cans every second week. And for small apartment buildings having three to six units, garbage will be limited to 10 bags or cans every second week. There is also a change in bulky items. Items that don't fit into a standard garbage bag or can will be collected every second week with garbage. For single-family homes in each duplex, three bulky items will be collected every second week. And at small apartment buildings, they'll be collecting a maximum of 10 bulky items every second week. Onto the schedule. So the first week that the changes take effect, residents in Kitchener will receive collection of garbage, bulky item, green bins, and blue boxes. During the following week, only green bins and blue boxes will be collected. Yard waste collection will start in the last week of March, on the opposite week from garbage. And also note that during the first week after certain holidays such as Easter and Christmas, residents will be able to set out double the amount of garbage. In Kitchener, everyone will have the same collection day as they do now, except for an area of about 3,000 homes in the Ottawa River Road area. This area will be changing from Wednesday to Friday, and they will receive notification of this change. So we have several tools available to help residents with these changes. These include a calendar, My Waste app, and our website. Every home will be mailed a collection calendar within the next two weeks. The calendar will be a handy reference since it contains all the collection schedule details and information about the new services. The calendar will also contain 10 free garbage tags. We also have My Waste app. This free app allows for residents to look up their schedule and set personalized collection reminders right to their smartphones. Our website has an online version of the app, as well as all the information about our new and existing programs. Plus, we have another fantastic resource, our call center, which is available to residents 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Onto garbage tags. So right now, about 90% of households in the region are at or under the new garbage limits. However, on occasion, residents may generate enough or may generate garbage above that limit, so we've created the garbage tag program. As mentioned, residents will get 10 free tags with their calendars. Tags will also be available to purchase online or at various regional and city buildings. Residents who have a medical condition that generates unavoidable garbage and may not meet the new lower limits can apply to our new medical exemptions program. Upon approval, we'll send them a supply of free garbage tags. For families with babies and disposable diapers, we'll be offering a free drop-off at our transfer stations, and the diapers must be in a clear garbage bag. There are no exemptions for large families. By fully using the green bin and blue box program, anywhere from 60% to 80% of garbage can be diverted. However, if families do struggle, we do struggle to meet the new limits, we can offer home assistance to assist them in reducing, reusing, and recycling more. We have a comprehensive promotion and education campaign underway for landlords and off-campus students. This plan includes letters mailed to landlords, presentations, and door-to-door outreach in student areas. In the designated downtown area, daily collection will continue with the existing 10-bag limit, and weekly blue box collection will also continue. So in closing, I want to thank City of Kitchener staff for all their help with these program changes, whether it's setting up sites, some of your facilities as tag vendors, or distributing the large new big blue box. Your staff have been wonderful to work with, and I really appreciate all their efforts. And I want to thank you for the opportunity tonight to provide you with this information, and I hope your handout, between my presentation and your handout, you'll be more prepared for the curbside changes as well. So Kerry and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. We do have some questions. Councillor Gazola.
I just buzzed in. I didn't think I'd be up for a while. Anyhow, you have a lot of instructions for the general public. Do you have a lot of instructions for your frontline people, the people that pick up the garbage? I... The reason I will give a comment, I really, I have a lot of problems with the frontline people that... And I think, going down the road, the success of where you want to go depends a great deal upon them. Because, I'll give you a few examples that I run into constantly. When it comes to the green bins, your frontline people just throw the bins in to the garbage pit without really trying to empty them, and then throw them back on the, wherever they land. I've gone through already five green bins that have been broken by the drivers throwing them down.
Right.
Another issue is with the blue box. Go out in this kind of weather and work hard to clean off a nice shelf to put the box on, so that the driver can see. The driver empties it, and lord knows where the box lands.
Oh, dear.
Is it, you know, can they be trained like we do? You know, here's where you got the box, when you're done, here's where you put it back?
Yes, that's how we train them. And we send them reminders all the time. And with the new collection contractors coming in March, they'll undergo an extensive training program to make sure that they follow the expectations of the collection.
So is it a new company in March that's taken over?
Yeah, so Miller Waste will be your collection contractor, starting in March as well.
Okay, I don't mean to be critical, but I think to have a success for this program, I mean, people work hard to try to help out, and then when they see that, they, the attitude turns, well, you know, I've done my bit, but they're not prepared to do theirs, so why bother? So, thank you.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Collector needs to do their job correctly, and so we encourage residents to call the call center, let us know if there's collection issues, so we can go back and find the driver that might need a little bit more retraining.
And if I may, it is a requirement under the new contract, they are actually going to be required to stack the blue boxes once they empty them, and place the empty green bin inside the stacked blue boxes. That's going to help, hopefully, with both the throwing issue, which breaks the bins, as well as bins blowing away on windy days. So that is a new requirement, once the new contract comes into effect. We have been doing our best. We recognize, we've heard from a number of residents that this is a concern, so this is how we're going to address it going forward.
Great, thank you. Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, I appreciate the new program that's coming in, and you coming in and giving us the information. Just one question that I have with regards to recycling. Through this new contract and understanding that there's going to be a new company doing the waste management, was there any thought given to lids or something for recycling bins? Because the number-one thing I hear about with regards to people not wanting to recycle or recycle, they put the recycling bins out too early. There are certain wind tunnels in the city, and all the recycling ends up all over the place, which just makes more litter, right? And that totally goes against what we're trying to do. Was that given any consideration with the new contract? Or is there anything we can advise residents to do to try and assist with the blue boxes not blowing while they still have contents in them?
Right. Well, we do encourage residents to sort into two blue boxes, one for containers and one for paper and film, plastic film. So, and to stack those to help prevent litter. We have investigated lids, but there are a lot of logistical or collection issues associated with that, and the lids can disappear or blow away themselves. So there have been some municipalities that have investigated that, and it creates some collection concerns and slows down the drivers as well, so collection takes longer.
Really, what we found in speaking with other municipalities is there is no standard lid system that will retrofit the blue box system that we're working with that doesn't cause additional problems on its own. So unless we were to go to completely change our system and go to a single-stream sort with carts, lids are not currently an option. We do constantly hear that, though, and we are trying to work with residents. It's one of the reasons we've gone and made the larger blue boxes more acceptable with this program. Hopefully, with the deeper box, we won't get them mounting. And really, our best encouragement to residents is to try and take that extra moment, crush containers so they're not just air-filled blowing around. And as Kim said, if you put the heavier paper container on top of the plastics and metal, hopefully that will weigh it down. Unfortunately, we can't allow bagging of containers, which several people have brought up. Our facility is not set up for that, but you can bag the paper. So if the paper is bagged and heavier, that does help.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And Councillor Davie.
Thank you for coming in, making the presentation. As you may or may not be aware, even though this is not a city-level initiative, waste collection, we do get a lot of the questions and concerns about it. So, just a couple of questions, since I have you here. So, I like, I understand, then, so if people, some people don't use garbage bags, like standard-sized garbage bags, they use a garbage can. So even if they put, if they can fit two garbage bags into like a sort of a standard-sized garbage can, that would count as one bag for collection?
True, provided it is under the weight limit. If both of those bags have to be pulled out individually because they're over the limit. Our drivers have had some experience with this, and so have our staff in the townships with bag limits, so it's sort of a case-by-case basis, which is why the weight limit is also there.
Okay, and that 50 pound, that's the 50 pounds per bag?
Yeah.
Okay. And I guess the only other question I have, the oversized, the freedom to put out that bulky stuff every second week, I think, is a big help. But the only other question I have is, there are, I've seen several cans around that are, I'm not really sure they're standard-sized, they seem to be like 1.5. How do residents understand what's acceptable there? And what, like, are they going to get warnings, or how's that going to work?
Unfortunately, that's an ongoing battle for us with all of our local retailers. We have gone in person, we have done letters, we have constantly been out to all the local retailers who sell garbage containers to let them know what is an acceptable size. And we get told, well, these other sizes keep selling, so we're going to keep stocking them. So we do recognize that some of those oversized bins are out there. If residents are just using them to set their garbage in, and the staff are able to take it out, hopefully, things will still be collected. If we do have a problem with our new collection contractor, they will be notifying us. We have had nothing but assurances from these two new collection contractors that during the first month of this change, they will be more than happy to work with us. We want to keep our streets clean, we want to keep our residents happy. We know there's a period of adjustment for everyone, and certainly during the first two cycles for all of our city and township residents, the collection contractors are going to work with us, we're going to have extra customer service staff. And our goal is to help residents, so certainly assume that they're erring on the side of not having the information necessary, as opposed to deliberately floating the rules. So if we do have a concern with oversized containers, we'll be going personally to address those issues.
Okay, so, okay, I would expect some growing pains on both sides, then. So if I'm hearing correctly, then, if, you know, don't abuse it, don't go out and buy four of your 1.5 size, because then you're essentially sort of skirting the rules.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just one question. As soon as you institute a fee per tag, people start dumping garbage. People will drive out of the city to dump garbage. Are you ready for that, or are you, have you stepped up inspection of, are you expecting that problem? What will you do about it?
So once again, we do know from dealing with other municipalities who have gone through this change, that they do experience a bit of a spike in roadside dumping. And we do actually have a good working relationship with both the city and the township crews with the roadside dumping procedure. We recognize that some of our regulations in terms of the proof required and for dropping off the landfill, we're working to relax those a little bit, to make it easier for everyone to keep the streets clean. We have hired some additional inspection staff on our team. Several of them are full-time, and some are temporary full-time, because while we know there will be a spike, we're not sure where our new normal will level off, and we want to be sure that we do have the flexibility to address those concerns.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I, oh, not quite yet. Councillor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thought about if I should make this comment or not. I don't have a question, but it's just quickly a comment, and it's not any criticism to you. I appreciate you here to present information, and that's good. We have to ensure that there's an active effort made, that our residents understand exactly the changes that are being made. But I don't want to be remiss to now point out some level of frustration that I've heard from at least constituents in my ward, who are frustrated that a level of service that they had really appreciated from the Region Waterloo with waste collection is changing to a drastic level as it is. I understand that other communities, and I relayed that in their sentiment back, that other communities have done the same thing, but their sentiment is, they always cherish and appreciated this, and come to cherish this level of service, and they think it's a negative direction. And I wanted to make sure that comment is returned back. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? No? Okay, thank you to both of you for coming in. I know when we discussed this at Region, there was a feeling that the lower-tier municipalities would benefit from having presentations with the scope of the change, and clearly by the number of questions and so on. I think it was helpful and informative, so thank you to both of you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to delegations. The first delegation, Tony Cormos. He wasn't able to be here, but his wife Louise is here, but just to answer any questions. So if there aren't any questions, it's been moved by Councillor Galloway-Seelock. Is there a seconder? Councillors Yonetski, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been approved. Thank you very much. Our next delegation is Kathy Farwell and Arts Pay. Welcome, Kathy. And I want to remind you, you have five minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Verbanovic and council. My name is Kathy Farwell, and I'm a visual artist at Globe Studios. I'm probably best known as the founding organizer of the Box Art Show and Sale. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to introduce Arts Pay, a brand-new project for the visual arts in this community. Artists always seem to struggle financially, no matter how hard they work, yet we live in a region that celebrates creative endeavor and supports the arts, so why is this? This question led to three years of informal consultation across the region, talking with over 70 individuals and organizations associated with the visual arts, asking about problems and potential solutions. Concerns expressed by the arts community include low art prices, fees and payments, lack of jobs, limited exhibition opportunities and funding, the exposure myth, fundraisers undermining fair prices for art, misconceptions around art creation and the value of our work, a sense of isolation and a limited personal network. The public expressed confusion about art prices, production standards, and the need for the development of good business practices and professionalism. Most importantly, identified by all, was the need for a comprehensive visual arts information source, and a way to connect beyond one zone network.
Art isn't just one thing. It can bring a neighborhood together. Comemorate alike.
Document your history.
Spark an idea.
Tell a story.
Be in your cafe, on your wall, in your garden.
Boost productivity.
Celebrate an event.
Brand your business.
Teach and inspire.
Elevate, energize, nourish imagination.
Generate conversation.
Conversation.
Be the heart.
What it shouldn't be is complicated.
What if we could keep it simple?
What if there was one place, an all-in-one resource to find art?
Artists, skills.
And information.
My painting could be on your wall.
My photograph could introduce your annual report, or be on your website.
I could test new ideas, designs for your factory.
Paint a sign or mural for your business.
Teach a how to paint with passion.
Tell a story.
My story or your story?
Make you feel proud of your history and your community.
Help you get started on your own art journey.
Show you that art makes any space unique and memorable.
Explain that paying fairly for art is a win-win for everybody.
The first thing we need to do is connect.
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 Arts Pay.
Arts Pay.
Arts Pay.
Arts Pay.
That's where you can find us.
So Arts Pay is a website, it's a job site, a public education campaign, and it's a new conversation for this region, a positive one centered on opportunities and compensation. The handout you received outlines the project objectives under the logo in the form of questions, and on the reverse is a summary of the website content. In the marketplace, you can search the directory to find art and artists listed by medium and style, and you can source over 30 skills and services such as restoration, art consulting, sculptors, muralists, photographers, painters, bloggers, and more. Arts Pay is a place to post a job or to find one, with guides on fees, contracts, models, everything needed to do business together. You can use the calendar to find art shows, festivals, and gallery openings. And as a central information source, Arts Pay is linked to a wealth of existing community resources and organizations. Arts Pay is just two months old, and is designed to grow through community input and artist feedback, and by supply and demand. It will be actively promoted to manufacturing technology, the business community, education and arts institutions, service clubs, and more. So tonight, I'd like to invite you to explore the website, artspay.org, use this postcard to inform others about it. And on the back, you'll see it can also be used as a business card by listing artists with some suggestions of new ways to work together. For example, a small business could elect to rent art at 4% of the value of the work per month, and offer the artist an exchange of goods and value. Display this logo decal to signal your own commitment to operate ethically with the sector. Be on the Arts Pay list of supporters as a role model. Most importantly, please encourage others to use Arts Pay to help us build a tool that works for everyone. Thank you for your time this evening.
Wonderful. Thanks so much for coming in. Kathy, we have some questions. Councillor Marsh.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Thank you, Kathy, for your presentation. Very well done. What a great video that you have. I just want to understand better if you have a specific request of the city, or if there's something that you are hoping the city can do to help spread the word.
Basically, to get the word out there, we're really hoping that it will be the go-to place for everyone. As mentioned, it's linked to all the other projects, to the galleries, to the arts institutions. It has a wealth of information for the general public, everything from arts appreciation to renting art for your business, or ways that arts can help you in manufacturing and industry. So if you could help to get the word out and tell your constituents, we're also helping to raise standards by addressing, categorizing careers into professional and developing, and addressing services that way, and providing mentoring. So again, young artists that are looking for help can go and find that on the site. Second Tuesday night of every month is a visual arts meetup, again, for people to connect and start to network and plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Marsh.
Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, thank you. I looked at your website several times today and went beyond that, and I was very impressed by your website. But I'm trying to understand, you know, what you're interested in, or, you know, where we're going with this. I also would get somewhat confused as to, is this a duplicate organization, or are there other similar organizations? I'm not clear exactly where we're going down the road. Like, what is Create Scope? Create Scape? That was, I saw that on your website.
Create Scape Waterloo Region was an ad- Create Scape Waterloo Region was an adjunct to the Creative Enterprise Initiative. What it did was facilitate groups without not-for-profit status to be able to apply for grants. So, in this case, I was able to submit my game plan and my budget to Create Scape, who vetted it and decided to support my application to the Kitchen Water Community Foundation. That organization is, I believe, is in limbo right now.
A Create Scape?
Mm-hmm.
So, if people wanted to donate, I gather that that was the avenue to go to donate to your organization?
Yes. Thank you for that clarification. I don't believe they're taking on new projects at this time. You asked me if the website is a duplicate project and I believe not. Five years of organizing the Box Art Show and Sale, that was the thing that became really, really obvious that it was very difficult for the general public to connect with artists, to have any sort of business guides to do work together. There are existing fee structures out there, but most people are unaware of them and so they're incorporated in the website. So, the idea is to make visual arts accessible for everyone, to make it very easy to find information, and then to find the connection to all the other wonderful things that exist. For example, when the hub is up and running, that will be something that we'll be able to direct people to as well through the website.
Yeah, I don't have a, like I said, I think your website was, I glanced through it and I saw the names of a lot of people who have shops and places in our community. I'm just, I'm just trying to see how it all fits together. Is there a board of directors for Arts Space, Arts Pay? Or is that just your organization?
It's my volunteer effort, basically. It's a segue from the box effort. Once the project is up and running, the first, there is definitely a strategic plan. The first part is to get the arts community informed and onboard. Then we have something to market, to go to the industry and business. We have already approached Min. They're going to link to our site and post a blog. We can go to other organizations, but first, we need the artists. At that point, there may be in future the need for a board, but at current, it's a volunteer effort funded by the Kitchen Water Community Foundation.
Okay. If I'm better understanding this now, then you're really reaching out to the arts community to come together to have a central location.
That's right.
To advertise our wares.
That's right. And we hope to be self-sustainable through advertising. The Artist Pay an annual administration fee. It's not a membership. It's a fee to hire another arts practitioner to maintain the calendar and postings and listings and so on.
That's good. I thought you were going to come here to ask us for a lot of money, but you're not.
No.
You're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Wonderful. That looks like it's it. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. We also have here a delegation, again, just here to answer any questions. Glenn Mathers and Tony Lee from the Royal Highland Fusiliers Regimental Council, which is item B4 on the Committee of the Whole Agenda. Does somebody want to move it? Moved by Counselor Arnettis. Seconder, Counselor Schneider. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in and look forward to seeing the project move forward in the coming months. We'll then move on to tenders. And Ms. Palmer is here to answer any questions. We'll go through them, excuse me, as is the normal practice, one by one. Number one, any questions on the overhead door maintenance? Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, we have a couple of questions. The first one is, there's an asterisk on the page. What does the asterisk refer to? On page one, little one, dash, two. I just, I wonder if I'm missing something.
Ms. Palmer.
I see the...
Are you referring, sorry, to the, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the asterisks beside the bid price?
Yes.
So, that denotes the company that we're awarding to.
Oh, okay. Okay. I didn't, I'm looking to see what that meant. Okay. Can you, the other thing, can you just explain how they arrive at that $61,000 price? When you say that our average, our average spend is $75,000, what do they bid on? How do they come up with that $61,000? Does that mean we're going to be spending $14,000 less a year for this now?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor. So, it really depends on the level of repair services that occur throughout the term of the contract. So, what we do is we frame the contract to have an estimated volume in regards to hourly rates and the preventive maintenance that we know of that will occur. But the level of actual spend will depend on if there are additional repairs over and above what the average annual spend was historically.
But does it mean, all other things being equal, that we're going to look at $61,000 instead of $75,000? If we, let's see, if we have exactly the same level of service as we did last year? Does it mean that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would say no because it's based on a sampling of the repairs. That's how we come up with the hourly rates that they're proposing. So, to have an exact same year, I couldn't guess that that would occur.
Well, does the $61,000 mean anything then?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the $61,000 allows us to evaluate the tenders received against one another in regards to the preventive maintenance and the hourly rates proposed for the repairs.
Mr. Redman, you want to add something there?
Through the mayor in addition, if it goes over that amount, there is an agreed-upon hourly spend for additional work to make sure we complete the work over the next 17
Is that it, Counselor Gazola?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll go on to number two, placemaking plan. Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I don't, I don't really have a problem with this and I understand it was, this is, was approved via the parts planning. My question, though, is that this is just the initial stages for planning around it and the placemaking. Is there, and it wasn't clear, is there an established budget at this point, even notionally, for how much the additional placemaking costs for this area are expected to cost? I'm not sure if it's a question of staff or the tender, but...
Mr. Bloom? You're coming up as chief recall. I don't see the chief here.
Through the chair. At this point, between the capital budgets aligned to engineering and parks, it's about $900,000 total. And most of that is base construction. Through this process, there may be opportunities for that budget to increase, predominantly, for example, a partnership with the downtown BIA, who may wish to contribute over and above what we've already allocated in our capital budget.
Okay. And that's just, that $900,000, that's over and above the regular works for the street replacement?
Through the chair, no. So, the $900,000 is baseline and through this process, we would identify any needs for, if there was, it would be more than a baseline and look for funding sources, for example, private businesses that are in the area, the BIA or other sources.
Okay. And, okay, and that's baseline for this single project?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I'm not totally clear on this really. Is this something they're going to be repeating all over the downtown or is this just for Queen Street? Now, I know this was in the budget. I went back to look and it was, it was included in the 2015 budget. But are we going to do this on every block of the streets that we work on or? Like, you mentioned $900,000. Where is that $900,000?
Through the chair. So, the $900,000 is in the capital forecast for works to be done in the future. So, to answer your first question, this is the only one we've got contemplated at this time and the only reason we're doing this is because there are works slated to be done that are in the capital budget over the next two or three years.
So, tell me again, where the $900,000 is?
I believe $650,000 is in engineering's capital budget and the $250,000 is in parks, which is earmarked for the Vogel Sand Green improvements.
I couldn't see that. That's fine. Thank you.
Counselor Singh.
Yes, thank you. Just adding on further what Counselor Gazola, the question he was asking, similarly, again, this is something that will probably be replicated in other parts of the nodes as well because the consulting will be kind of redundant in other areas. Have you considered taking in a contract position as opposed to, you know, tendering these out per project?
Have you looked at the efficiency difference?
Through the chair, that may be an option for us to look forward to. I think on this project, because Queen Street is such a narrow right-of-way and there's a, it requires a sort of a higher level of understanding, which is what the consulting team will bring on this level. But on a more generic street, I think your option is something we could consider.
So, again, I'm sure the staff can take the time to do the difference analysis, what the cost difference would be, but I think that would be prudent to do. So, I strongly advise it.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on then, Kiwanis Park Pool. Any questions? Okay. Not the two wind pad rink floor? We have a couple here. Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I actually heard about this before I got my council package among some regular users of the Odd Complex. And the concern was, I don't see it listed here, but that as part of this process, they might be reducing the size from the Olympic-sized ice surfaces down to the standard 85-foot width instead of 100. Is that the case?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that is the case. When these ice pads were built, the trend within the industry was to move to these larger ice pads. It has now trended back towards the NHL standard size.
Counselor Gazola.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I'm concerned that all of a sudden, we're putting gas tax money into this. It wasn't contemplated two years ago, but now it is. And my concern is over the apparent problem we have with our water sewer and stormwater that, and I guess my question is, are the floor, are those rink floors in worse condition than our water pipes? Because they have now taken the priority and there's a fair amount of dollars coming from our, from our gas tax money into, into those. I guess, I guess in fairness, that's a question I should be asking council and not staff, but I know staff, council takes a lot of direction from staff.
Mr. May.
So, through you, Mr. Chair, to respond to Counselor Gazola's question, these are two of our most-used ice pads. They're at the end of their lifespan and if we don't replace them, we will have to close the rinks. What I would say is, if my recollection is correct, I think something like 90% of the gas tax that the city receives from other orders of government is directed into the hard services. There is a small component and this is one of those pieces.
Well, I would like to argue with that. I spent the morning going through, looking into the, into the gas tax and where it's being distributed. And really, I would think more than, more than half of it is going into not hard services. And I guess what concerned me is that I saw nothing, virtually nothing, going into water sewer and stormwater. And that's why I was concerned, is this, does this have a greater importance than the other? I think...
Mr. May.
Yes. So, through you, Mr. Mayor. I do know, I do know that staff has completed this analysis in the past and shared it with council. We're happy to recirculate it. My recollection is certainly that over the 10 years of the capital forecast, something like 90% is going to hard services. But we'll certainly recirculate that to council.
Well, I did it this morning and trust me, we're, over the next 10 years, we're putting $67,631,000 gas tax. And there is a large amount of $37 million going into resurfacing city streets and the rest of it is going to softer projects. So, and that, that does concern, this should, I should have brought this up last Monday, but I ran out of time.
Mr. May.
So, through you, Mr. Chair. As I, as I said, we'll certainly be happy to recirculate the analysis that staff has completed on this previously.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just, I wondered, one of the things you mentioned in this is iota requirements. What, what, can you just try to help me understand what changes there are with disabilities to the rink floor? What, what's involved there? That's one of the reasons we're, we're looking at this.
Mr. May.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chair. I know that, I don't have the specific details in terms of what components and so I'm happy to circulate that by email. But this is to meet our legislative requirements from the province.
No, and I appreciate that, but I was just trying to understand what, what do we do that's, that's different for an ice rink, the ice surface? It's not the stands, it's not the stands, the viewing area, anything else. I would appreciate...
Staff will circulate that.
Yep.
My final question is, I look back and this amount has been in the budget for several years and, and I looked at last year, there was nothing, it's all slated for 2017, but it says costs incurred to date. We've already spent $118,000 and there was no budget for that. But what, what did we do? What have we spent already before we've even let the contract go?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's the funding that would have been used to get us to the point where we could issue the tender documents, so the design of the, of the infrastructure.
But don't we normally split our capital forecast up into pieces when that happens or?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think that's the practice we strive for. If I recall on this project, it actually was separated out over a couple of years, but staff, through, I think, last budget, brought it together so that we replaced both floors at the same time. And in fact, that's the reason we're seeing the cost savings in front of you today.
Well, I miss the cost savings.
So, so through you, Mr. Chair. Based on the report in front of you, the surplus for this amount of work is $120,000 and that is because instead of tendering these two floors at different years, we've done them as one and found those cost savings.
Sounds like a good news story.
Yeah. Well, actually, they've been in two years together for the last several years. They've been combined, really. That happened several years ago. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Counselor Gazola. Counselor Yonetski.
Yes, thank you. Comes as very much of a surprise to me, hearing a statement that the ice surface of the two Olympic-sized rinks will now be reduced to the smaller size. There are a number of hockey leagues that play there and I belong to one of them and this is all news to me. I mean, here it is. I mean, I read the report. It still talks about the Olympic-sized pool. It doesn't say anything about it being reduced in size. I was the impression that we're approving an Olympic-sized rinks. So, I'm just wondering whether any of the leagues know what's, what's going on that when they book again for, you know, next year and the year after, that they know they'll be playing on smaller rinks.
Ms. Palmer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I actually wanted to apologize for the oversight of not noting the reduction in ice service. That was an original version of the report. It must have been missed in the final draft, so I apologize for that.
Thank you. Mr. May, did you want to add anything?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is that the, the major ice users are aware. I, well, I would guess that we have not reached out to every single team that rents ice on that surface when we made this decision. This is a standard that's happening across many municipalities.
Well, that may be the trend, but I figure that the people who are using it should be the ones that are consulted. I mean, I see nothing wrong with the rinks in terms of the size. I've heard no complaints at all. People playing hockey in different leagues at, whether it's at these two rinks, Kinsmen and Kiwanis, or whether at the Sports World or Activa. I know, of course, the size of the rinks are different, but not that, hey, we've got problems at Kinsmen and Kiwanis, we've got to do some changes. I've heard absolutely nothing and I'm there every week. So, I, I think we're... So I, I, I think we're, I think we've got an issue here. And I think maybe we should just hold off and find out what's, what's going on. I hate to do this, but I know this has been in the budget for the last two years, and this is the first I'm finding out about it. I don't know what to say.
Counsel Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Bravonovic. If, if these repairs aren't done, and, and we do run into a situation where the ice does break down, we have major tournaments like the Kitchener Dutchman, there, there are tournaments that are booked in there. What would be our responsibility if for some reason the ice broke down and they couldn't hold a tournament, or the Dutchman had to move their games? Would we have to help reimburse them to play their games elsewhere?
Through, through you, Mr. Pair, Mr. Mayor, we, we would certainly have a responsibility to do everything we could to find them other comparable ice surfaces. I think that would be difficult, given the usage of our other arenas, and so we may, if you're talking about tournaments with out-of-town teams booked, there may be some financial impact to the city.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. And it's sort of, it's been my experience, I've, I've played old timers hockey as well. The inside joke is sometimes those big ice surfaces take a lot more out of you than you want.
Counsel Davey.
Yeah, thank you. I clicked over because I was a bit taken, I was, I understand there's a slight oversight and that happens, no problem, but my, my question is, what's the, is there a concern about the timeliness of approving this? What are the, what are the deadlines? Is this something we need to approve now to get it in place, or can we defer it to the following council meeting just to get that little bit of extra feedback? Or, I guess by the same token, has there, have we received enough feedback from users that we're, we think that this is going to be an okay change?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll certainly jump in, and then my friends in purchasing may want to add something. We have a short window with which to do this work, because we'll want to do it in the offseason. It's certainly council's prerogative to defer it if you long, if you'd like. Staff feel that we have the information we need to proceed as the tender was written.
Okay, so if, if it is delayed to, if it is delayed till next, our next meeting of council, does, does that put any pressure on the timelines to get it done? I basically, I don't want to put any rentals out because we're delaying the decision. Can I get confirmation on that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe that the next council meeting is the end of February. I think that is a significant delay to the project, and while I don't have the detailed project timelines in front of me, I think that becomes a problem to hit the construction period.
Okay.
Palmer, did you want to comment at all on it, or no?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I was going to echo what Mr. May just said.
Okay, I'd like to provide a brief comment as well, Mr. Mayor, if I could just.
I got two more, are there more questions? Okay, I'll come back. Counsel Schneider.
By going down to the smaller-sized ice surface, is that why the cost is what it is? If we went back to the Olympic size, would the cost of construction increase?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I can certainly tell you that if the ice pad gets bigger, it will cost more money.
Thank you. Counsel Janetski, question? Okay, go ahead.
Well, I can see if it's going to be the larger surface, it would cost more money, it seems logical, but I was going on a basis that we're approving the larger one according to the report. Talk about the Olympics.
Okay, we're, we're past that point, Counsel Janetski.
I know.
Staff have said that was an error.
So if we're going to defer this as was requested, and the next council meeting really is the end of February, we do have a council committee day coming up in two weeks, maybe we just have a special council meeting to approve that tender or that thing in two weeks, and see if we can do something in the next two weeks. So I'd move that we defer this to the February thirteenth, February meeting, and get feedback from staff as to what happened in terms of notification to appropriate users of that particular rink, and whether they've been satisfied, notified and satisfied, because I've heard absolutely nothing.
Okay, I'll come back for that motion. Counsel Marsh, question?
Yeah, based on that question, I just have a question of staff. Can you highlight for us any benefits that we may have, other than cost savings, to decreasing the size of the ice pads to the NHL regulation size?
So through you, Mr. Chair, my understanding is that this is where the industry is going. This is where the user groups, and I'm not speaking specifically about teams that play on these rinks, but where user groups want us to go, and, and so for that reason, we think not only is it less expensive, but when we look at tournament bookings and all, you know, I have an eight-year-old daughter who tries to play ice on those surfaces. I can tell you that when youth sports are playing on those rinks, it is a challenge for some of the younger ages.
Okay, so this has not just been out of the blue, this has been something that users have been talking about, and we, we hear that that's what they want?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Chair, as I said earlier, I can't speak to the level of consultation, how low staff went to get that input, but I do know that they spoke to major user groups about this.
When you say, you don't mean low, you just mean how micro, right?
I don't know if they went team by team into the dressing room to tell the, to, to tell the teams that this is happening, but I do know that they had some conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Ionitis, question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bravonovic. I guess my question is relating to, do we have any other Olympic-sized arenas?
No.
Okay, so the majority of our arenas are all basically standard NHL-sized arenas?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just before I go to Counsel Davey, I do have one question. If we move away from these Olympic-sized ones, does it impact our ability, for example, in the future to host something like the Canada Games or some other major event, if perhaps they're looking for or require an Olympic rink?
So my understanding is that it does not. I can hear a lot of questions from council on this. I'm not ignoring that fact, and so if council would feel better to defer this until we can have a special council meeting, I would suggest that the end of the month is too long, but if council can come up with a better way, a better time, then we're happy to, to circulate tomorrow more details on this.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing you suggest is that the thirteenth could work, we could take it to committee that day and, and have it go to special counsel then, right after, on, on the thirteenth?
If that's council's desire.
Okay. Counselor, Galloway-Seelock, do you have questions? Okay, go ahead.
For someone who's aware, because I am no longer committee chair, what does the thirteenth look like? My understanding is it's a fairly heavy day to, already, to add things to, it might be problematic.
It's a busy day, that is correct.
Okay, then I will have a comment. Should I make it now?
Sure.
I just think we need to move forward this. I think that knowing the staff that run this department, that they've done their due diligence, and that they've spoken to who they feel they've needed to speak to in order to make this decision, I think we need to proceed with it today. I don't see any benefit in, in waiting. I understand there may be some around the table who appreciate an Olympic-sized rink, but I too have seen my niece play on, on that rink, and it, it wasn't a very active game from a scoring perspective, because they couldn't get back and forth quick enough to score too many goals in, in their timeframe. So I think for every user, I think, you know, if the Dutchmen, which I'm sure were, were consulted, are fine to move in that direction, and others that staff would have spoken with, I think we should proceed with that, and I, and I have every confidence that staff have, have done the engagement that they need to in order to make this decision.
Counsel Davey. There you go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel a little guilty I started this, this issue. I, I was a bit caught off guard, I guess, and although, having said that, I did hear, I did hear about this originally from another hockey player, so obviously staff did go out and engage the, some of the stakeholders. I asked the question largely because I wasn't really entirely sure whether this was something that would be looked favorably upon or not. I do get both sides of it. I, I guess I'm a little nostalgic, because I remember when the, those twin ice pads were built, and having an Olympic-sized ice was something a lot of the communities around were envious of, but by the same token, I understand that there are standards out there, and it is an NHL standard, and I'm sure it would be preferred, I understand the Rangers practice there as well at times, and it's probably preferred to have a standard ice size for them as well, so I don't think the issue is serious enough that we need to defer it. I'm comfortable approving it as it is.
Counsel Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Bravonovic. I also am comfortable with moving ahead with this. I think there are no Olympic-sized rinks in the Ontario Hockey League, there are no Olympic-sized rinks in the NHL. I think perhaps the time that these rinks were built, the thought was that there might be a movement towards Olympic-sized rinks, and that has not happened. We are in North America, the game is played on the NHL standard-sized rink, so conforming these to that standard, I think, is, is a good move.
Counsel Gazola.
I don't have a great deal of problem here, but we're, we're looking at something that's, we're going to put in place for the next thirty years, and staff have indicated that they can deal with it if we delay it for a couple of weeks. I, I see no problem with, let's delay it for a couple of weeks and, and at least have all the issues on the table, because if it shouldn't be, it's something we're going to have for thirty years, so. If we can, I think it's clearly been indicated that we can delay this decision and do no harm to anything, so I would support the deferral for two weeks.
Counsel Janetski.
Yeah, I do want to come forward with that motion, that staff look at it and get back in two weeks at the February thirteenth meeting. It's, it's just a matter of confirmation as to what is out there. I'm surprised some of the comments I've heard around the horseshoe here on assumptions and another assumption, and I heard this, but we've got no facts, absolutely no facts. And unless, unless I see something, and this is all news to me, because I'm involved in this, playing there quite all the time, this is a total, total shock and a surprise. So I, I just, you know, for a two-weeks delay, I see nothing wrong, because we're dealing with a, with a two-million-dollar project practically, that is going to be there, as Counsel Gazola says, for many, many years, and a two-week delay is not going to cause much, much concern.
Okay, is there a second for the deferral? Counsel Gazola? Okay, and I'll just, very briefly, I, I am prepared to support the deferral, only because staff have indicated that it can, it can proceed. I, I don't think this is a, I think staff have done their homework on this issue. It's not staff's responsibility to go to talk to every hockey player or every individual team, it's a responsibility to, to contact and work with their major tenants, and we've heard that they've done that, but I think there are some questions, and, and so an extra, you know, twenty minutes on, on the thirteenth, half an hour, won't be the end of the, the world, I would hope, but that's going to really depend on everybody around this horseshoe and, in terms of that day. So, recorded vote's been requested on the deferral. Those in favor? Those opposed? Deferral doesn't carry? So might as well deal with that one right now. With the tender, those in favor? Those opposed? Oh, sorry? Oh, sorry, I haven't moved any of the tenders, so somebody want to move it? Move Counsel Ionitis for that one, seconder? Just the rink, because I want to get it down to Counsel Galloway-Seelock. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And any questions on supply and deliver of printed envelopes? No? So if somebody wants to move the tenders? Moved by Counsel Ionitis, seconder? Counsel Galloway-Seelock? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. We'll now move on to the reports of the committees. Counsel Davey, Finance and Corporate Services.
Thank you. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Dave Schneider that the two items on Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Thank you. Counsel Gazola.
I, I would like you to vote on item number two separately and have a recorded vote on it.
Okay. We'll deal with item number one then. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Number two, recorded vote has been requested. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Planning and Strategic Initiatives, Counsel Singh.
Yes, the items as outlined from the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee, moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Galloway-Seelock, have been recommended for approval.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Audit Committee, Counsel Davey.
Thank you. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Schneider that the two items from the Audit Committee be adopted.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that too is carried. We'll move on to unfinished business. Any new business? Nothing for me. Any questions and answers? Okay? Counsel Davey.
Thank you. Just a question of, just relating to the news that we heard out of Toronto regarding the road tolls, and I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, if staff might have the answer to this. I heard that the province had indicated they would be giving a greater share, a greater amount of gas tax dollars back to the city of Toronto, is all that I heard. Are we aware that any additional funds will be distributed to the rest of the cities in Ontario?
So the, the commitment from the, the province has been to double the amount of gas tax for all municipalities that have transit systems, so the money in this case would be going to the region, and it would start over a three-year phase in, in twenty nineteen, fiscal twenty nineteen, twenty, and by twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, it would mean an extra ten million dollars annually to the, to the region for GRT.
Very good. I just wanted to make sure we're being treated fairly in that.
Yeah, and it's obviously contingent on whoever's in government at that time, because there's a provincial election in between. On this, Counsel Gazola, or a different issue?
A different issue, but it does sort of tie into that.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I, and I had asked that question of staff, and, and as, as our representative on the region, I guess we will see some benefits at the local level of that money, all that extra money going to the region? That's a question for you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I mean, if, if you're, if your question is, does it mean that we'll have a, a better-funded transit system in GRT in the future? I would suggest it probably does mean that, yes.
Is it all for transit?
It is all specifically for transit.
Not just transportation, just transit?
As my understanding is, it's all for transit.
Okay, that's fine.
That's my understanding, but that'll be.
That's the response I got from staff. The, the other question I have, when, and we deal with it, and we always talk about the federal gas tax, is there also a provincial gas tax? So do, do we get anything from, our, our capital forecast only has federal gas tax revenue?
Mr. Chaplin?
Do we get anything for, do we get a provincial gas tax?
Through the chair, as, no, as the mayor's noted, right now, the provincial gas tax goes to municipalities with transit systems, in this case, the region of Waterloo, so they receive all of the provincial gas tax in this community.
Currently, and also the doubling up in the future?
That's our understanding, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. The question I had deals with the $3,610,000 that we're getting as a grant this year, is that correct? Is that a one-time grant?
Mr. Chaplin.
Through the chair, you're referring to Phase One of the federal infrastructure funding?
Yes, is that what it is? It's by phase, pardon?
I don't have the number in front of me, but that sounds correct.
That figure, yes, yeah. I raised this last week when I was in an effort to try and reduce the charge to our customers for gas, water, or for water and sewers and that. And there was this question of incrementalism or something.
Incrementality.
Yes. And I wasn't clear on it, and looking at, I don't quite understand, because those projects that we're allocating those funds to were originally planned for 2017. So isn't that, getting that grant, doesn't that reduce our expenditure?
Mr. Chaplin.
Through the chair, I can go back and look at the report, but I believe there were two projects. In one case, as you've noted, the project was in the plan, but the budget exceeded what we had allowed for, and so the grant will go to fund the incremental cost. And in the other case, we had pulled a project forward in the capital forecast, and so, again, that met the test of being incremental to the current capital program.
So if the project, okay, I just want to raise, there's question and answer period, but I'm not clear on that, and so you're telling me if the project that we have coming up costs more than we have funding for, we can use that, those grants?
Yes, that's correct.
We've got so many projects that cost more than we've got funding for, so I don't understand that.
Yeah, I mean, in fairness, Counselor Gazola, the whole discussion around incrementality is a difficult one, and it's particularly difficult in a place like Ontario in comparison to some of the other provinces and territories, because we do have asset management systems in place, and we do tend to have 10-year capital budgets. And that's created some of the challenges and why we've been pushing this issue so much with the federal government and with the provincial government, that, you know, we don't want incrementality to play as significant a part in any Phase Two of the infrastructure dollars. Because, quite frankly, it, for some municipalities, creates some real challenges, because they may have gone into very detailed funding in the long term, and now, all of a sudden, those projects aren't eligible because they're not incremental. I think what we heard during budget, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chaplin, while we have, you know, a number of projects in our 10-year capital budget, we don't have them specifically funded yet, and that does give us some leeway in terms of future funding, correct?
Yeah.
So I know it's probably clear as much...
So what I'm learning is that we're being penalized because we're in too good a shape or something, but I might, one final question while we've got any questions in that. We keep talking about that as Phase One, and that was a grant for one year, what is Phase Two?
Phase Two starts in fiscal 2018-19? Or 20, or 1920, Dan, help me here. Yeah, yeah, because it was, their first budget was 16, no, it was 15, 16, 16, 17 is year two. So yes, it starts in 2018-19 and goes, I think, for another eight or nine years of funding.
And where does that stand? I've heard so much about this infrastructure monies, but I don't...
Well, so the discussions have been continuing between the municipal sector and the federal government. We anticipate that budget, the budget, when it comes down in February or March, will, between the budget and details in the weeks following the budget, should provide some clarity as to what that would look like, particularly for the portions of the money that won't be application-based.
I look forward to that, thank you.
Okay. Moving on then to first readings of the bylaws. It's been moved by Counselor Kelly Galloway-Seelock, seconded by Counselor Anetski, that leave be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda. There are no late starters, and that the same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to Committee of the Whole. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Davy, Committee of the Whole.
Thank you.
Bylaws have been moved by Counselor Galloway-Seelock, those in favor and opposed, carries. Question, Mr. Mayor, I don't recall, we dealt with the first half of item number two, did we deal with the second half of that as well?
We did not.
We did not, okay. So could I get a mover for that, please? Moved by Counselor Marsh. Any questions?
I think Counselor Marsh has a question.
Oh, question, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I have no problem with this, I do want to move it. I just want to ask staff, you know, I realize that they've already mitigated any potential problem with having the lit-up sign with the automatic changing copy, not interfere with the next-door neighbors nighttime piece, but there may be other residents across the street who will be affected by this new sign. And so I have no problem with the tender, or sorry, the proposed terms as written. However, I'm just asking staff if they can please be responsive to resident complaints and potentially make the time that the sign is not lit up longer, so that it's, so that provides more relief from light pollution, if necessary.
Mr. May.
Mr. May.
So through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely, we can do that. Should either yourself as the ward counselor or staff at the center receive complaints about the lighting, we would certainly work with the neighbors to figure out the best timing possible.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, those in favor and none are opposed. And we're on to item number three. Could I get a mover for that, please? Moved by Counselor Ionitis, any questions?
Counselor Singh has some questions, and I have some questions, and Counselor Gazola has some questions.
Yes, just more of a clarification, I want to make sure that we are proceeding with the initial intent. Now, again, this is the steps that the city would be taking, our staff would be taking, in helping to establish the creative hub, but it essentially has to be a, something that germinates or comes out of the community with a proposal, correct? And if that were not to happen, as RFP would be laid out, what would be the next steps after that?
Mr. Blue.
Through the chair, yes. The point of this process is to seek to find somebody from the community that would, in fact, establish and develop the creative hub. If this process fails to generate such, then it'll be another conversation with council about what do we do next.
Okay, the reason why I ask is, in the report, in the background, the second paragraph, as a sentence lays out, staff will proceed with the next steps in establishing the creative hub. It might be semantics, I wanted to make sure the wording isn't as such, that we are taking the responsibility, not necessarily as I thought the intent was, we're just putting the RFP, the assistance is there, but again, it's incumbent on someone coming forward.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Gazola.
Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand, I want to deal with 44 Gockel Street first. Do we have any funds set aside for that project at this point?
Mr. Blue.
Through the chair, for the actual implementation of a creative hub, no.
There's no money there whatsoever?
Not at this point, that's been approved, no.
As I review this, look at this request for proposal, we won't be collecting any rent, is that right, when everything is said and done?
Through the chair, at this point, what we've asked is that proposals at minimum cover CAM and taxes, but that doesn't prevent proposals from proposing more, and that would be part of the evaluation criteria that you would see when the proposals come in.
But that's, but we're asking that they cover the common area charges, but that's all. If that's, that's all they do, it is, is it very likely that we're not going to receive any rent?
Through the chair, I think as the wording would speak to, that's the minimum that's asked of, but we'd be seeking proposals, hopefully that would propose some form of rent. But our minimum expectation is simply CAM and taxes.
Do we have any idea what this is going to cost us?
Through the chair, at this point, until we see proposals, and depending, it may vary from proposal to proposal, so at this point, the answer is no.
Do we have any idea what it's going to cost to bring that building into a position where it can be leased to third parties? Any ideas?
Mr. Reeburn.
Mr. Reeburn.
Through the chair, it can be leased right now. So there are longer-term upgrades that we're looking at for it, like the boiler removal and replacement with the new HVAC system, but right now, it is leasable space.
So, but what I'm seeing is that we have no idea of what costs we're looking at down the road. Is that a fair...
Through the chair, we do have cost estimates, I don't have them with me, I could circulate that to you after today's meeting.
Have you circulated that to council? I know we've circulated what it might cost to replace the boiler, but do we have any idea what, of establishing a creative hub, what costs might be involved?
Through the chair, only for the capital requirements for the building over the short to long term, not costs for capital for the land, for the leased space. I believe the tender outlines what their costs would be to improve that space for their use.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Bravonovic.
Thank you. Two questions. First, with respect to 44 Gockel, you know, one of the things that we talked about was that it, that we would possibly entertain a multi-site solution if somebody were to present that. And I'm wondering where in the material that's here is that, because I didn't seem to notice it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor...
Oh, Ms. Palmer, sorry.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct, it's not noted specifically in the approach or evaluation criteria, because it's not specifically a criteria that we would be evaluating against. It's within the document, it outlines around the engagement results that we received around an arts hub, and it's, I believe, listed in that section of the document itself.
So it'll be clear to potential applicants that if any of them want to go that route, they, they're able to do that?
That is correct.
And it wouldn't necessarily be frowned upon in terms of their evaluation?
Correct.
Okay. The second question I have then is with respect to 48 Ontario Street. And one of the things that we discussed was the possibility in considering in the evaluation any assemblage of properties that could happen as part of that development. And where is that being factored in here?
Who would speak to that, is anyone key in?
Mr. Wilmer's clicked in on that one.
Mr. Wilmer.
Through the chair, my recollection is that in earlier discussions, there was reference to potential for assembly, but that that was thought to skew the bidding process unreasonably. So that reference was, is deleted from the criteria now, so it's to be open to all options, whether they're consolidation or not.
Okay, I don't quite recall it that same way. If I recall, what the discussion was, that that would be a possibility, and staff would evaluate it in that context.
You're correct, I think we're saying the same thing, but earlier on, we were proposing a statement or a criterion that would say, if the proposal is to include this in a potential future consolidation, we won't entertain that, because consolidations take too much time, we don't have time. We want this building to start generating vitality now. So the reference to not entertaining consolidations was deleted. It's really about how quickly the building be put to use, whether or not it's part of a consolidation.
I guess what my concern becomes, that if we just look at it in the context of this individual property, are we potentially limiting or restricting any redevelopment in sort of that, that half of the block? Because it's sort of in the, in the middle, surrounded by at least three, if not more, property owners.
So I think that, once we get the proposals and we're evaluating them, the key interest here is to put the building to use and to get it generating vitality. The proposals will have to compete against each other in terms of what else they do for the block or what they do with the remainder of the property. But clearly, as a property that has heritage value, our interest is in protecting and preserving this building and making sure it gets put to use. So certainly, consolidation, if it was to propose demolition and redevelopment, would not be valuing or honoring the intent here in terms of heritage conservation.
Well, and I would agree, I guess what I'm looking at and what I'm asking is, and what I thought the direction was where we were going, was that it could be a factor in terms of considering proposals, and I don't see that here. I'm not talking about demolition, but I think, you know, I've traveled to Toronto many times in other cities and seen historic buildings be surround, I mean, just as late as Friday, I was with staff in Toronto and saw historic buildings that were enveloped with larger new buildings, and saw the historic building preserved and a larger-scale redevelopment. And, you know, I'm not seeing that as a possibility here. And that's what I thought was at least a possibility.
So through the chair, at risk of repeating myself, I think that previously, we had a reference that consolidations would not be entertained. In hearing the concerns that that raised, we committed to deleting that reference.
So I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to put, like, an idea of wording, I think, I'll say that I largely agree with your comments. Go and put some thought to that, there, I think there's at least one other person that has questions.
There's four other people with questions.
Oh, four other people, okay.
Counselor Marsh, Etherington, Gazola, and Singh.
Okay. So you concluded your questions?
Yeah, I'm done for now, I may make an amendment at the appropriate time then.
Thank you. Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. I just have a question around the timeline for 44 Gockel, on page 3-4. So, on February 1st, it's planned to have the first stage RFP released, and then, one week later, a site visit. So is there any opportunity for those who were unavailable for the site visit or didn't know about it yet, but later on would like to put in a proposal? Will there be other site visit dates, or is that the only opportunity?
Ms. Palmer.
Through you, Mr. Chair, so absolutely, if we received a request for additional dates, we could work as long as it was within the open period to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you. And that's the only question I have at this time.
Okay, I believe Counselor Singh was next.
Counselor Etherington, then Gazola, then Singh.
Okay. Okay, Councillor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions. I'm concerned about the sale of 48 Ontario. I don't want to see a repeat of the Mayfair Hotel debacle. So my question is, can staff give me a general indication, and I'm stressing general, because I am anticipating the response, a general indication of the level of interest out there in buying, that we're aware of so far in buying 48 Ontario. I'm not looking for detail, Corey, but can you tell me if there's a general interest in the building?
Mr. Bloom?
Okay, sorry. Through the chair, what I can say is that development interest downtown, and the interest in, in the development community acquiring property downtown is the highest I have seen it in my 15 years. So if, if ever there was an opportune time, certainly now is more opportune than any I've seen before.
Okay, and looking at it from a glass half-full on 48 Ontario Street, if you do not get a satisfactory offer, and that building sits empty, what would be done by the city to protect the heritage character of that building, and avoid another situation, another possibility where the building ends up having to be demolished?
Through the chair, I might defer that question to my, my colleagues who have a better understanding of the plan, but I, my understanding is that our intention is to make sure that that building stays in a, in a state that, whether it's sooner rather than later, or later rather than sooner, can, will be maintained until the point where it can be redeveloped at some point, but I defer to my, my colleagues on the other side of the horseshoe if they had anything to add.
I think actually, that response is good enough for me. Thank you.
I think Mr. Redman wants to add.
Mr. Redman, do you want to add anything?
Through the chair, I would just echo Corey's comments and state that we would continue our inspection program that we had undergoing, that we were conducting and, and continue to conduct until the property sells.
Councillor Gazola?
Yeah, one of the criteria that we're looking at for the sale of 48, 48 Ontario Street is that, one of the things we, we want, the city is seeking a use that will provide increased vitality to the downtown. Can you help me as to how we will measure increased vitality to the downtown? What, what exactly does that mean?
Through the chair, one easy way is would be the number of end users that would make use of the site on, on a given day. For example, if somebody wanted to buy it to convert it into a warehouse, or to a data center where there is virtually no bodies actually using the space, then that's obviously something that doesn't provide vitality. Beyond that, so for example, if they wanted a residential use, or commercial use, or an office use, we would be gauging the, the, the amount of activity and making, and comparing proposals based on that.
So it's all to do with the number of bodies that will be in, and around it? Is that right?
Through the chair, that would be one factor. Also, the type of activity would, would likely weigh into the, the comparison.
Okay, thank you. Just along the same lines, and it's, I meant to ask it in, in the, on the 44 Gockel Street, when we talk about rent proposal, and then we talk about the financial and/or social return. Now, how do we, how do we measure social return? Financial return, there are ways of, of seeing what that means, but how do we measure social return?
Through the chair, I would suggest that the, the second criteria around the vision for the property is really where, we've listed a number of things, you know, things like urban design and architecture being one, but, you know, it's accordance with our official plan policies and, and the parts plan. I mean, those are the types of documents that really speak to sort of the, the social return beyond just physicality. So I believe it's in there that we would be assessing the, the social return.
The question I asked related to 44 Gockel, is that what you answered me, or?
Through the chair, my, my misunderstanding, I thought you were referring to, to 48 Ontario Street.
No, it's, it's the rent proposal for 48, or for 44 Gockel, where we talk about item number four, the financial and/or social return. We're going to fix up the building, we're going to set up a creative hub. Now, how do we measure the social return? Or is it possible to do that?
Through the chair, my understanding would that be, so financial return obviously is, is, is cash. Social return would be services that perhaps, that this organization would be offering that otherwise, you know, becomes of a benefit to the larger community, which could be a number, any number of, of things.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions before I go to Councillor Singh. Yep, Councillor Singh's, yep. First question, just looking at the, some of the conditions for the sale of 48 Ontario on page three dash seven. It lists, the very first line, respect to heritage. Now, this building, I think we've confirmed it is heritage designated? Yes, okay. And along the lines of some of Councillor Etherington's concerns with the Mayfair, we have since implemented some new measures to ensure the same sort of thing is less likely to happen. Can I get confirmation of that?
Mr. Redman and Mr. May.
Uh, Mr. May?
So through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, through the Heritage Kitchener Committee, there have been a number of heritage best practices that are either already in place or in the process of being put in place.
Okay, so this, this building does have all of the protections of heritage structure, as well as some new ones that we've just implemented. So my question is, the, and that's covered somewhat, I guess, by the first bullet point. My question is, for the third bullet point, and just trying to widen this to the maximum number of potential bidders, why would we require a plan for retaining, and I guess I have even more concern with enhancing the designated heritage features?
Through the chair, what this is likely going to assess is the manner in which they would preserve it. There are all different methods for, you know, preserving or enhancing designated features, and I presume that our heritage planning staff, for example, would, would want information on how exactly they plan on, for example, brick material, how they're actually going to treat that, because you can do it a right way and a wrong way, and just making sure that things are done properly.
Okay, but this would be an additional cost for anyone just to put in a proposal, correct?
Through the chair, depending on their level of expertise or their familiarity with, with these buildings, if they've, if they've dealt with buildings of this age before, then they probably, and have a history of working with contractors that deal with these types of materials, it's probably no cost, but it may be for somebody who's new to this type of a building.
So in your experience, Mr. Bloom, is it likely that the bidders that we receive for this will certainly are, already have had experience with heritage buildings? Because my sense is that it is not.
Through the chair, I mean, I think that would be our, our, our hope, but it would certainly be one of the things that we, we look for, especially in terms of their, the capabilities of actually delivering on their proposal, if they have no track record of dealing with heritage issues and don't have a team behind them that have experience, then that would obviously be something we would evaluate that proposal based on.
Okay, thank you. And Councillor Singh?
Yeah, I actually had some questions and concerns regarding the aspect of heritage for 48 Ontario. Mr. Chair, you jumped the queue. You asked the questions before me. I had a array of good things to say about you. I don't know if I should say it now or not, but anyways, I'll, I'll do it anyways. No, I want to take the, take a moment, because obviously Chair Davy is, because he's chairing the meeting for the committee, the whole, he can't necessarily move this, but it's through his effort and advocacy that we are at this point. I think we're at a good junction where we're going to enhance 44 Gockel into a, a hub that already exists there. And, and of course, with the, the sale of 48 Ontario, it'll allow us to, to endeavor to be able to do that without putting extensive weight on the taxpayer. And because of the current designation of 48 Ontario, I'm confident that the, the character of the building will be preserved. I will still make some additional questions on the heritage aspect of it. So can it not be the wording of it just, you know, take effort to preserve the existing heritage character as opposed to, as opposed to enhance? I know you kind of made comment on that already, but I wanted to see if you could do further. And the second is a question about timing. I agree with Mayor Vavenevich that, you know, we don't want to hinder opportunities of a consolidation of a, a larger development to take place. Aspects of vibrancy in that area will have to do with density, especially with the LRT station being so close. There are only very limited spots in our core that we can leverage on this opportunity with the station, and this being our building and our land. We're fortunate, because of that, land values have gone up because of that. But when we narrow the scope too much, I'm, you know, concerned that we may deter away that right type of vision to come forward. So just, if you can comment on that, Mr. Bloom.
So through the chair, and to Mr. Wilmer's point, I mean, I think that's one example where, you know, one of the, one of the comparators here is, is the amount of vitality you bring to the site. So if you're able to consolidate land and bring, bring together a far bigger proposal than just using the land itself, then obviously that proposal on that criteria would, would, would score higher than, than one that simply uses the site. So I think there are, so clearly there would be advantages. And through, to the question of the, the heritage designation, I don't know the, the designation specifically enough. I'd have to look at the wording. I think what we would want is to make sure that the evaluation criteria wording is consistent with what the wording of the heritage designation is.
Again, I struggle with enhance as opposed to preserve. I think the effort should be to preserve. That's what it is. I think we are really putting an onerous effort on whoever would come forward to create additional vision of what that building already exists. I think the, the character of the building is what we're trying to keep. But anyways, aspect of vibrancy, my, again, issue is with the proposed timing and renovation of the occupancy. If a developer wanted to consolidate that area, would it not be enough if they took efforts to preserve the outside shell of the building, but they're not yet ready, because they don't have a vision as to how the inside would correlate with the larger design of a, a bigger building, if they're successful in assembling land? So why the occupancy attached to the renovations?
Mr. Bloom, do you want to hold your thought for just one second? And Mr. Wilmer, do you want to comment on the previous question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this relates to the questions and concerns around retaining and, and enhancing, specifically with the enhancing aspect of it. Retaining the heritage features is a, is a must-have. That's a minimum. And so because what we're doing here is establishing evaluation criteria, we need to put in place criteria that will enable the bidders to separate themselves from other, other proponents. And if there is no, no criterion for enhancing, then there would be no points given for enhancing. Everybody has to meet the minimum. Everybody would meet the minimum. Everybody gets the same number of points. So there's, there's no, so, so I think it's important for us to at least leave the option in there and acknowledge that, that a bidder who's doing more than the minimum will get some credit for that. If there's concerns by council, then, then perhaps an alternative here is to simply say retaining and/or enhancing. That way, there's, there's no expectation that you must enhance. It's an option.
Yeah, I, I like that kind of editing of the, the wordage. And again, I look to see to Mayor Vavenevich if he has anything else in mind with the proposed amendment that would help to facilitate a larger consolidation of a development. If anything else, my suggestion could be with a renovation focused around the, the heritage character, so that that doesn't continue to deteriorate, as opposed to the renovations that would have to be done on a whole, in the entire structure of the inside of the building. That's where someone may not be prepared as quickly to come to vision as to what they would want. But I'll leave to Mayor Vavenevich. Mr. Chair, I'll move this when ready on, on your behest. And, yeah. Oh, if, I don't know, it's, it's not already kind of understood, but I would like to have that, if that needs to be as amendment, with what Mr. Wilmer has said, with a change to the heritage component of it.
Changing, changing bullet number three to and slash or.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Vavenevich, does anyone?
You have, you have Councillor Marsh, and then I'll propose my.
Thank you. Councillor Marsh?
Thank you. Yeah, I remembered one other question I had on page three dash five regarding 44 Gockel. Just wondering, the third bullet down on that page says, meet some of the expressed space needs, including concept drawings, blah, blah, blah. So I'm just wondering about the word "some," and I'm, I'm curious about that choice. I, I'm not, I, if, if there's a reason why we need to use the word "some" instead of something like a significant portion of the expressed space needs, because I, I want to shoot higher than just "some." Can staff comment on that?
Through the chair, while it may be possible for someone to, to provide all of those, we realize that may be not possible, given the amount of space. Really, the intention of how we would evaluate this is obviously the more you, the more of these things, these elements that you provide, the more points you can get, and I believe will probably be in the actual document fairly explicit about that fact.
Okay, so there will be more details given that will indicate that?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, and then Mayor Vavenevich, back to you.
Thank you very much. And I've been trying to reflect on staff's comments, but also reflect on what's happening in the marketplace around us. You know, there was just a story on CTV, I think, this, just yesterday, for example, around the consolidation and redevelopment of the Household China site up in Waterloo, and, and what's happening to, to real estate values with it. And partially, it's because that there's a consolidation that's, that's happened there. In the case of, well, Household China happens to, I guess, own all of the properties in, in question there. When I look at, at, at our history, we've, as a city, spent significant dollars over the years to consolidate properties in order to facilitate redevelopments. So I think of the block where the market and the, and the townhomes exist as, as one example, where we consolidated numerous properties to facilitate that. I, I look at what we did on the other part of Centre Block, where we consolidated properties to facilitate that. I think, in addition, quite frankly, the viability of, of preserving a heritage building actually goes up when it's part of a possible consolidation, because you can now spread some of your, your, your redevelopment costs along a, a broader building. And so I think it needs to be there as, as, as a criteria, but I think we also need to make sure it doesn't jeopardize the timelines. And so, and I'm not a, a writer of criteria, and I don't know if it belongs under development vision or a separate bullet, but something along the lines of ability to be incorporated into a broader redevelopment while meeting the timeline and objectives of the city, I think allows for that to be evaluated, but also ensures that our objective of making sure that this project moves forward in a timely manner still gets protected and preserved. And so that's what I would like to see, see added.
Okay. So there's no one else in the queue? Okay. Councillor Marsh?
So if I may, just to understand the intent here, is it that one of the evaluation criteria would be the proposal's ability to, to amalgamate? And so those who don't already own property arounding, surrounding the property would, would, would be at a disadvantage?
Not at all, because I think you could have someone, and there's, you know, there's large-scale institutional people that, for example, have gone out and assembled properties in, in Cambridge and other municipalities. So somebody could in fact look at our property and look at some of the adjoining ones and try to assemble it, and not actually be one of the adjoining property owners. There's, you know, if you look at that corner right now, there's at least three separate property owners that, that I'm aware of. If you look at a corner redevelopment, if you look at a lengthwise redevelopment along Ontario Street, there's several, like four, five, six different property owners. So I think there's all sorts of scenarios that can develop, and, and I think we should at least allow for that to, to have some weighting. I'm not saying, you know, when they go and weigh it, I'm not saying give it, you know, 50 points out of 100, but maybe it's 50 points out of 100, but maybe it's something that should have five points in terms of part of their evaluation on this issue.
Okay. And that's in order to, is that in order to increase the options that can be, that the building can be used for? Can you just reiterate? What is the intent behind this criteria?
Well, I think it's two things, and I think Councillor Singh was absolutely right. There's very few places where we actually have a LRT station in such proximity as we do to this particular property. And so part of our objective as a municipality, particularly when we own property, is to see developments occur that speak to the broader vision of us as a municipality. And part of that broader vision has been the redevelopment of that block. Part of that has already happened with phase one of the Andron proposal, phase two is slated to happen, and then ultimately, the redevelopment of the rest of that block, because, you know, let's face it, other than our building, you know, there's not a lot of other properties. There may be some that have some value, but not a lot of other properties that have value. I don't think anything else has any heritage designation. And so I think by allowing for that broader redevelopment to be looked at, we can make sure that some of our objectives around intensification, particularly in the nodes and so on, around LRT stations is being met, and that we don't end up, you know, being left with, you know, quite frankly, the kind of situation we see a little bit. And, you know, if I look back, I regret that there's one property on the first part of Centre Block that we probably should have acquired back then and didn't. And I'd hate to see us end up with these, you know, individual little pieces that aren't going to really result in anything that speaks to the urban vision and vitality we're trying to create.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the queue?
Nope.
Okay. So how we'll do this then is, it's been moved by Councillor Ionitis. We'll take Councillor Singh's amendment first, followed by Councillor, or sorry, Mayor Vrenovic's, and then we'll take the main motion, okay? So we are first voting on Councillor Singh's amendment, and a reminder, that is to broaden the appeals, changing the third bullet point, just adding a slash or for enhancing the designated heritage features, okay? So, those in favor? See your hands, and that carries. And now Mayor Vrenovic's, which is before us, and I'm sure staff will take the comments that were made in addition if there's any concern. Those in favor? And that carries as well. And now the main motion, as put forward by Councillor Ionitis, those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, are there any additional items? There are none?
So actually, there's one, I think I should probably, no, no, should I not take the motion to go in camera now? In this part of the meeting? Because we're not going to have a special council meeting. So, a move that we go in camera for the item that was supposed to happen at 6 o'clock?
Okay, those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Now, could someone move?
Move that the committee rise and report.
Thank you. It's been moved, myself and seconded by Councillor Singh, that proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held this date as attached heretofore and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Councillor Galloway-Seelock, seconded by Councillor Yonetsky, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, we finally pass and numbered seriously by the Clerk. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Councillor Marsh, that we adjourn. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried.